Good evening. It is Wednesday, August 30th, 2017. The time is 7:05 PM. This is a joint meeting of the Evanston Plan Commission and the Evanston Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm Jim Ford. I am the Chair of the Plan Commission. Seated to my left is Mary Beth Burns. She is the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. We have a quorum present for both the Commission and the Board, so we will call this meeting to order. I will serve as the temporary Chair just for a couple of minutes. We propose to conduct this event in three pieces. The action before us is one which requires action by both the Plan Commission and the Zoning Board. We will conduct a public hearing at which we will hear from staff and the applicant on the proposed project. We will take public testimony and cross-examine. At that point, we will recess the joint meeting. The Plan Commission will then convene, conduct its deliberation, make a decision on its part of the project, which is a map amendment to the zoning ordinance. The Plan Commission will then recess. The Zoning Board will convene a meeting. They will consider a request for special use and a major variance. Having taken their action, then they will adjourn. We will adjourn the joint meeting, and then after a couple of minutes of getting settled, the Plan Commission will reconvene to deal with another piece of business that has nothing to do with this project. So if that general process is acceptable, I think the first order of business is to select a Chair for the joint session. Is there a nomination for Chair?
I move that Chair Ford acts as the Chairman for this joint meeting.
Nominated and seconded, are there any further nominations from the floor? Nobody going to make this interesting. Is there a motion to close the nominations? Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Then the question is whether to elect Ford as the Chair of the joint hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I will abstain. Thank you for your confidence. I hope this works out for you. Then I will call to order the joint meeting of the two boards. I don't have the project number. Yes, I do. This is a proposal, a request for a zoning ordinance map amendment, a special use, and a major zoning relief at 1829 Simpson Street, a rezoning from R3 to family residential to B1 business. The Planning Commission case is 17 PLND 0037. The Zoning Board case is 17 ZMJV 0065. We'll follow this procedure. Staff will introduce the project. We will then ask the applicant to make any presentation or comments they wish. We will proceed to questioning by the two boards of the applicant. We will then invite any public testimony. That testimony will be under oath. At the conclusion of public testimony, we will allow for questioning of the public who testify by members of the two boards or by the applicant. At the conclusion of that process, we will close the public record. So who on staff is going to open the proceeding? Megan? Ms. Jones will make the presentation.
Before the Plan Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals this evening, we do have the case at 1829 Simpson Street. What is being requested this evening is a rezoning from the current zoning of R3 to family residential to B1 business, a special use permit for a type 2 restaurant, and a major variation for a 4.3 east interior side yard setback for a roofed patio and a one-story addition on the rear of the building. As you see here, which the applicant will probably go into a little bit more detail on, is the west elevation for the proposed restaurant. And in the rear, you see the proposed addition with the roofed, partially-roofed patio area. Here is the proposed layout for the restaurant, which does include some interior seating as well as an outdoor patio area in the rear of the building, which does also include some seating and is proposed to be fenced in. We do have the addition laid out here for the kitchen prep area as well as the covered porch area. Here is where the proposed trash and recycling containers will be located. That is in the parkway in front of the building, so right along Simpson Street. The applicant will have these trash receptacles stored on their property, and then when it is time for the trash pickup, they will wheel it out to the front, to this parkway area where they will be picked up. And I can go through the standards, or you can just pull them up as needed. The standards for the map amendments will need to be met, as well as standards for the special use, which we have nine of, and standards for the major variation. And each of these will be addressed as the Commissions and Boards do their deliberations. So hand it over to the applicant for additional information.
Yes?
So we bought this property. Hi, my name is Arkady Katz, by the way. My wife owns this property. So it was my idea to purchase it last year after the festival. We made this decision, and the property was on the market for quite a long time.
Mr. Katz, I've been reminded I need to stop here, and I need to swear you in, and I'm going to swear anyone else who either intends to speak this evening or thinks they may be called upon to speak, since you will be under oath, let me ask, raise your right hand. You promised to tell the truth in this proceeding?
I do.
Thank you. Okay. Forgive me.
Okay, so we closed this in October of last year with intention to develop this property as a neighborhood restaurant. Well, we attempted to get in touch with Privya Salderman, but it was unsuccessful. Attempts, we called her, she never responded to us, and so we were waiting until something happened, and we were thinking that this is a great idea for the neighborhood, to have a gateway on the west side, nice-looking place by the park where people can get together, kids can come over. Plus for everyone, I think. So we had very good food concept with it. I used to operate a wholesale bakery, some retail. Some info about us not correct, you know, everyone is talking, but we originally are from former Soviet Union, from Kiev, which is capital of Ukraine, an independent country. So half of the life we spent over there and half of the life over here. So the cuisine itself is basically Northern Mediterranean with some elements of Europe. Nice, clean food, very little processed. And we were thinking if we price everything right and get right technology in place, you know, we would be able to deliver right price and good service and kind of nice atmosphere because it's in the park. Originally, we wanted just, you know, to have a restaurant because we were not sure if someone's going to allow patio. We were not sure about this square footages, you know, because it's some limitation on parking up to 2,000, but we were told that patio is not counted. So after, we had inside meeting here in May of this year with city staff, then we had neighborhood meeting in June in Fifth Ward, and then we had three design and project reviews. And basically, last three meetings came, you know, with very little changes, and so here we are with all this. The back part of the restaurant is there already, but it's in horrible condition, so it would be better to tear that piece down. It doesn't look safe, and just, the same place, build another one, but step away from the property line where it is right now. Right now, it's on the property line, that back piece on the east side, so we changed it four feet plus to stay away, build same-type box and surround it with a cover porch. So if there are some local meetings or concerts, you know, there is a roof, a little bit of roof. And basically, good-looking project from outside, and what's my understanding is that a lot of people in neighborhood supported it, that's why we continue moving along with it. There are few people who were against it. I could never convince anyone, so it is what it is right now, and I'll be happy to answer any question. I'm also a general contractor in City of Evanston. I've built a number of properties on the North Shore. Currently have a couple open in Evanston, new construction. Also, we have a partner who owns a cabinet shop in Elgroe, and they also own this with us as a property. We plan to operate this restaurant. We've had so many meetings, you know, with all this, so if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer, you know. I don't know how much more I need to say. This is a small building, you know, we try to make it as useful as possible, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. Let me ask then, first members of the Plan Commission, questions? Commissioner Bellisle.
Thank you. Just so I understand well, do you plan on tearing down what's there and building something similar but a little further to the west? My understanding is pretty?
Yeah, the rear of the property, where you see the door, like in the middle, you see the door, like where porch is.
Yep, that's new.
There is addition over there right now. It seems like addition. They were not built at the same time. Addition is 16 by 10 right now, and it sits on the east property line. You see the west? Right now, it sits on the east property line. And so we plan to rebuild it, basically tear this piece down, because it's eight feet. It's kind of strange construction, really strange. And build a new one, a little longer, a little deeper, but stay away from the property line on the east side. On the top, you see east.
Yep.
It's right now east on the top and, you know, west on the bottom. So that part will be, on the east part, will stay away, but, you know, our plan was to make it a little longer because we have a bakery. We have meat and bakery, so we want it, you know, we need some area, you know.
Need some space, I understand.
Yeah, to have some prep, you know, with a dough, flour, and it has to be separated because it's a little dirty, you know.
Right, thank you.
That's what it is.
Other questions down here? Commissioner Lewis.
How do you see the outdoor patio working? I guess I have several questions related to that, so.
Okay, so what exactly about outdoor you want to?
Well, is it only for restaurant tenants, or is it for, or do you intend to have parties or, you know, gatherings or things? So I guess the concern is visual and noise disturbance to the neighbors directly to the east.
We plan, you know, regular food restaurant, like kind of like if you say chipotle or panera noodles, they like to have petios. You know, it's very attractive to have outdoor in summer. So over here, you know, we fence it, we want to fence it on all sides, but on this side, maybe have some more transparent fence. And so if you can see like where the bathrooms are, they're right by the back door. Suppose you're in the restaurant, you take the food and you walk out, or you have a pager, you know, and you get called, or server brings it to you. So you walk out through the back door, and you are right under the roof, so you can see it, you can see it, you know, right outside and kind of nice, you know, enjoy the food.
Yeah, I guess my question was, are you intending to have, to try to have events there or things that might, you know?
No, no, this is not the plan. However, you know, we have no liquor, just like regular football. I just got lucky that I have this big backyard over there, you know? I mean, it just happens that way, that lot is 150 something, you know.
So the fencing is solid fencing with a visual screen, or is it open?
Yeah, I wanted to have solid fencing on the east side and perhaps four feet high and two feet opening on the west side.
That's better, isn't it?
So people can enjoy, and also wanted, see, those points are grass landscaping, so wanted to landscaping site, plant some trees or shrubs. So imagine you sit on this brick patio and surrounded, you know, by greenery, perhaps some umbrellas, or under the porch, eating nice food, not expensive, priced right, there is parking. I don't know what not to like, so that's all.
Other questions?
All right. So we'll have questions now, as in, anybody from the ZDA have questions?
Hi, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last name.
Katz.
Mr. Katz, okay. Are you a restaurateur? Are you running this restaurant?
Yeah.
You are running?
That's the plan, yeah.
Okay, there is a facility in the back of it, maybe it's portable, it's a sports facility in the back of the restaurant. Is that very close to that, the lot line on your property?
Okay, you're talking about soccer field that's there right now?
Something like a soccer field or something, yes.
I say it's maybe 40 feet right now away from the back of the lot line.
As you planned it in your design?
No, I think he's talking about from the rear lot line.
Oh, from the rear lot line now?
The fence of the field is farther north from the, when you see, where you see orange, everything in orange, this is the lot line where it ends. And soccer field is slightly to the east, to the east of my east line, and to the north, well, I don't know, maybe 40, 50 feet, hard for me to say.
Okay.
It's behind other houses more, I would say. Is that temporary?
I don't know if it's temporary. It looks temporary. It'll probably have to move.
No, I mean the field, the.
The soccer field?
Yeah.
Yes, that's what I mean.
They put it up last month, and I have not seen competition. I just.
Are you suggesting that there's a soccer field currently on his lot?
Well, I didn't know how close it was. I know that when I went out there, I wasn't sure how far back 159 feet went, but there's a soccer field right in back of this address.
Okay.
It's got goals and walls.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that should be, but that should be on city property.
Yeah, it's on city property.
It's not on my property, but it's more, is it a soccer field?
Something like that.
Or it looks like a fence for ice field.
Something like that.
In winter, usually, it's not like high.
But if we go back to, if we go back to the site plan, it appears as though you've got like 20 to 30 feet of landscaping that you're planning on the north side of the patio. Is that correct?
Yeah, at least 30, yeah.
Right.
At least 30 right now.
Okay.
I mean, this is rendering, you know? I mean, it's a rendering. It could be less, it could be more.
Needs to be substantially similar. What you present tonight needs to be substantially similar to what you end up doing.
Okay, what I mean, there is no size over there. You need to know exactly how much it is.
No.
I'll tell you.
Just how much you were planning.
20, 28, 78. It's right now around 30 feet.
Okay.
Okay, to the brick, to the brick pavement.
The edge of the brick, sure.
To the brick pavement, yeah.
Okay. Thanks, sorry. Can I ask you a question related to that? That looks like a fireplace.
Well, we were thinking maybe, you know, some, something decorative or possibly fire pit. We don't know if it's going to be allowed.
Okay.
But for summer, kind of.
But that's your idea, is to create an inviting place back there where your customers want to go?
Yeah, we were sitting, you know, with Alderman, with our Alderman and other people, and we had a number of, you know, meetings, and we were thinking how to make it a little nicer, and it's a narrow lot.
Right.
Has its disadvantages, but you have to walk to the back, you know, it doesn't have white frontage. However, you know, restaurant was there in the past.
Right. Any questions? Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions. I know that one of the greatest concerns to the neighbors and the businesses in the area is the possibility of drawing wildlife, animals, rodents, and other pests. You're very, very close to the canal, and we at various times have problems with skunk and other critters. So I know that you have a plan to enclose the garbage. Do you have other rodent and animal abatement plans in your overall business plan?
I don't have anything on this rendering that shows something for rodents. However, when we used to have another place, there was requirement from Cook County that we should place certain things in the perimeter, and we used it. So I'm not sure is it going to come from Evanston or from county. That was specifically for mice.
Right.
They have that.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's been a long time they're using it. It's a gray, kind of gray box that can catch mice, red.
Okay.
There is city dumpsters, containers behind us, okay?
Right.
Okay, and they're like standing open over there, and it's not concerned to anyone, but.
Oh, it is.
It is? I don't know.
Oh, it is.
I mean, it's there, they're always there, a couple of them. I don't know the days of pickup, but they're there, and there is nothing, it's not secured, but it's there, and it's been this way for as long as I remember. And over here, I'm offering, you know, to enclose everything that could be enclosed. I mean, it is much better plans than to leave.
That brings to my mind the next question, which is typically at the commercial properties that we have in the area, we have to do professional refuse pickup, and that's done in, using dumpsters, not regular trash cans.
Yeah, they allow now, you can have rollouts with group. I mean, I investigated this, you know.
Okay.
They will, they do rollouts, and you separate, you know, a lot of separation on garbage right now.
So just to be clear, are you suggesting that you're getting daily, how often is your garbage pickup?
I don't think I need more than one week, once a week.
Once a week?
Uh-huh.
So that's a residential schedule? So for a commercial, we'd like to see garbage pickup more because it's group and it's commercial?
I'm not sure what their contract is because they have the contracts that I used to sign with them. There's basically automatic, they give you this. I don't know how often they pick up, but if you give them garbage, they pick it up. So apparently, there is that minimum they come up with, and you cannot really negotiate much with them.
Well, a greater concern to me, because, you know, dumpsters are generally kept out of the public way and out of public view, and when the carrier comes to pick up the refuse, they will go and get the dumpster and bring it out to empty it.
No, they're supposed to bring it to the curb, this type of dumpster, unless we have some deal with them, and we have to pay them extra, that they have to roll it through our property.
Right, but then the people along Simpson Street don't have to look at the garbage on the parkway, particularly if it's foodstuffs and restaurant refuse.
Yeah, they do the same thing, they roll it out the same way, you know.
Right, they roll it up, but then they are instructed to roll it back in. I mean, you know, we have properties in that same neighborhood where the dumpster is, it's hidden from public view, and we pay them to go and take the dumpster out from behind the decorative wall and empty it and put it back.
Okay, so at this time, I just can't answer because I don't have a contract with them. All I know, if it's, you know, you can, with residential company and this commercial company, if you pay them extra, they just come and get it from your property. But what I noticed in Simpson, everyone rolls it out once a week.
Well, the residential do, and I think that that's exactly where we're having some difficulty with the neighbors here, is that the requirements for residential aesthetics and commercial are different, the types of refus will be different, and so I think that that's where the big concern is, is that you put a commercial use there, and they want to be commercial, but they want to have the benefits of, you know, residential garbage pickup and whatnot, so.
All I can say at this point about garbage, we talk a lot about it, so I signed, you know, this sustainability letter or whatever statement it is, where I promised to separate, to do as much recycling as possible, and also separate plastic from paper, you know, those kind of things. And we will have, you know, mostly, it's going to be mostly this paper, paper packaging thing, and perhaps a little bit of dough, what's not used, because this will be made in advance. And it will be stored in the same type of containers, that may be different color, I don't know, but they're the same plastic containers. And if there is a need, you know, for them, or they come, I can roll it out and give it to, because they come at certain time, and this could be resolved. I mean, it doesn't have to be. I mean, it's easily resolved because you have a contract with them, and I did have a contract with them before, but I did have it in shopping mall, so I didn't pay attention what time, but they have a schedule too. When they come, they come on schedule.
Okay.
So that's easy. With funds and tax, it's easy to arrange everything, you know? Since we plan to operate daily, you know, and we have certain days for pickup, I don't see this as a issue.
I know that the, and this is a question for you and I possibly for staff as well. What is, what is so very concerning to people in the neighborhood is that Twiggs Park is just a little jewel there in the neighborhood. And if a restaurant were beautifully designed and really well-maintained, it could be an asset to Twiggs Park and to the neighborhood. But if it were, it's kind of, I think it has to go above and beyond because it is now going to be the front porch for what is one of the nicest assets for people in the neighborhood, and that is Twiggs Park. So that is just a big concern, and I don't know if there has been a final document presented with regard to the materials used for this restaurant and also the design.
You can see, there is a page with materials.
Well, I did look at what was there, but I thought that there were some notes in the.
Let's look at it. There is, here are materials listed all on the right side and something on the left. It's a brick building, heavy brick building, I say, and the plan is we will have to raise parapet a little, but we will have to, we will be able, if we do this, you know, we will have a window opening, so we would be able to use a Chicago brick above and continue it, and.
So you're not using drivet or anything like that?
No, it's brick, it's two, two and a half bricks thick and concrete foundation.
So the original box you.
It's all stays, yeah.
The original box you're keeping, it's only the addition that you're tearing down?
Addition also has the same, similar bricks, so it's possible that we will be able to reuse it. My only concern is, it's been painted so many times.
Right.
That I don't know, you know, if I'll be able to restore it so to its decent look. So if I won't be able to restore it, and I marked on it, so then I'll have to. So if I won't be able to restore it and I marked on it, so then I'll have to, you know, either paint it or do stack over it. So it's gonna be similar color, the same color. You know, some things are impossible to restore, I mean.
Yes.
And I wish, you know, I'll be able to, just don't know. I mean, this, this building, you know, it's been, nothing's been done to it for so many years, you know, and now here I come, you know, and I have to handle it. So in the best way, I would try to wash it. Wash it and restore it. It's, it's slightly reddish brick with colored windows, some, you know, maybe greenish or maybe some, you know, other color and ovens and combine, you know, two, three colors can make it look in very attractive. So that's my point. I mean, I see you have some concerns, but I mean, I've done some very nice projects. It's like really beautiful in many price ranges.
You haven't, you haven't built a restaurant, you have not?
I have not built a restaurant, it's not that hard. This is not, this is a small building.
Yeah, I know.
Okay? So don't look, you know, for something negative in me that I didn't build a restaurant, you know.
Okay.
I've done some more complicated, right?
All right.
Like building apartment building right on ridge in Evanston, which was pretty hard.
Okay, thank you.
Fifty feet high, fifty feet high, so. I mean, was successful.
Can you clarify on the site plan? Where the additional square footage, how much additional square footage is planned? Because that was not clear to me until we started discussing it tonight. What's the original footprint and then where there's additional square footage planned?
On the right side where you see like. Okay. Not sure. Okay, so.
Sir, can you go back to the microphone so we can pick you up, please?
So this is original footprint. This rectangular. And then there is a piece right here, right behind where the new is, new footprint is. So there is another piece over there.
That's where the addition was.
But this is where I'm gonna do addition, there is addition, yeah. So I'm just removing old addition and putting new addition. So, so what I'm adding is, old addition is hundred seventy square feet approximately. Approximately hundred seventy. And the new addition is three hundred twenty. So I'm keeping it as wide, moving it towards, slightly towards west and making it a little longer. I mean, of course, I can make it the same, but since I'm under two thousand square feet and I'm still under two thousand square feet, I decided to ask for hundred fifty feet.
Can you, can you clarify, please, what's going inside that space, the kitchen preparation? Is that where ovens and refrigerators are?
No, some refrigerators, mixer, and we want to have roller, like dough shitter, and I need to put them in line.
Okay.
Okay, and that takes some space because we were going to, planning to make, and maybe couple mixers, one bigger, one smaller.
Okay.
And.
In which direction do those need to get laid out? In the north-south direction or in the east-west direction?
It could be in the middle, Evan. If you want to have window on this wall.
Yeah.
Kind of, you know, people who work, you know, demand windows now.
Okay.
So over here, window and it could be table over here.
Okay.
It could be on the other side, it could be refrigerator in the middle, okay, or couple freezers here.
Right.
So it's a roller, it's a kind of system I invented and you roll the dough, certain dough, and then there is a form that makes dumplings. And those dumplings could be refrigerated or frozen and served. And because I set it up in certain way, technologically, I think we will lower the cost significantly and we will be able to sell them very reasonably.
And where, where are the ovens? Do you have ovens?
Yeah.
Do you have a deep fryer?
Maybe I will have one deep fryer, not sure yet. Over here, there is twelve feet hood.
So where the hood is, is where the ovens and the cooktop will be?
There is a cooktop.
Yep.
There will be oven, it's oven, it's, it's called reversible fan, fast speed oven. It will be located, located on the right, grill, grill in the middle and cooktop or stove on the left and possibly one fryer in between them. Over here, this darker area, right here, see all this darker area? It's more of like customer area.
Yep.
Front of the house, as we call it, F O H. And counter right here and there will be refrigerators right in this area, display refrigerator.
Okay.
Because we plan to have some food that people would be able to take, just come and pick it up and go, like some cakes.
Right.
We plan to make cakes, you know, like second half of the week and keep them refrigerated. And couple pastries, plus also there is demand. You know what people, you know, who come to this kind of places, they start asking for certain things like, they want frozen fruits, for example. So we have supplier who gives us some frozen cherries, fast frozen organic cherries and blueberries, gooseberries and couple other things, bring them from Michigan. And so one freezer, one refrigerator, possibly some French dough, frozen, it comes in one pound. And once people try it, you know, and some frozen pastries, sometimes they wanna make them at home. So we sell them at discount and people can do them many times. They don't have to take it like a pizza, they can take it as a frozen pastry and put it in the oven, put twenty minutes and it's gonna be ready, so it's very popular.
So since you just mentioned deliveries, let's talk a little bit about that.
I didn't mention it, I mentioned that people can.
You meant, no, 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 you, you mentioned getting, having fresh frozen fruit delivered. So let's talk a little bit, not about delivering your fruit out, but having your deliveries and.
My delivery will be dough, not dough, flour, if I will have to get delivery.
That's it?
Well, the rest we're gonna just bring by ourselves. We don't have anything in such large quantities, you know, that we have to buy in large quantities. So we can, we have to exchange it all the time, every couple days.
So the plan is that you take a personal vehicle, go to Costco, Gordon Food Service, Valley, wherever, buy the goods.
Yeah, otherwise.
And bring them back.
Yeah, otherwise I will have to freeze the meat and that's not my plan.
So, so all in all, your business is actually a fairly small operation, such that you don't need the big box truck deliveries and those sorts of things?
See, flour comes from, it's not far south side, but it's, I'd say it's like forty, four thousand south, I believe, in Pulaski.
And what size truck does that come in?
I don't know, I will have it maybe once every six week, you know, if I need it, you know. And to go and, and take.
And because you don't have an alley, that, that, that delivery is gonna have to take place on Simpson? Thank you.
Yeah, these trucks, they often don't go in the alley, it's none of them. I mean.
And what time of day does that delivery normally happen?
That, I don't know, I have to order it. It's like ordering, it's, it's not gonna happen every day, it may happen once, it's, it's, it's two thousand pounds.
Right.
Okay, it's a pallet.
Okay.
It's a pallet of fifty bags. I can, I can buy them in, in supply, but quality is somewhat different.
Okay.
So theoretically, I can, I can pick them up too, but it's timing. It's like, you have to go there and they have to be there. It's a big, it's a big company that delivers to, to many bakeries, including Evanston too. It's called Tardella, Tardella Brothers.
Can you speak to what your hours of operation would be?
Yeah, we're thinking eleven to eight thirty for the customers. It could be that someone has to come sometimes earlier, you know, open up and maybe do soups because it's seasonal. And since we are like scratch kitchen, so we plan to have cooking done over there. Like, let's say Panera, they don't cook soups, they bring everything already cooked in plastic bags and they just cut them up and say we have this soup, we have that. So it's factory made. So their company sell it to franchisees. Over here, we plan to have it cooked in the store. And so we need sometimes couple hours, you know, to do it because stock takes, you know, hour, hour and a half.
Absolutely, I understand. So customers, the restaurant would be open from eleven to eight thirty for customers and then employees would be arriving on sites, you know, some hours before that. How many people do you expect would be employed at one time or?
At one time, we'll be, depending on the time of the day, it could be up to four people, I figure out, on premises. It's also, it also depends on the type of, how we set up service. See, we have like no, no waiters there, so it's more of a self-service, like you order at the counter, but not necessarily that you have to take it, it depends, you know, if you give a number, we give a pager and we can either bring it to the table, but because the restaurant is small, you know, but in summertime, you know, it's hard to catch everyone. And so people may be outside, so if they have a pager, you know, they can come and pick it up. So it's, it's not like a cafeteria style where you come and you say, mix this, this and this. No, it's gonna take five minutes. It, it's gonna take time to, to cook it. And some things will be ready and some will have to be cooked.
And can you describe where your customers and your employees will park?
Well, this is right now initially because I don't have a parking. So some may park, plenty of parking there all day long. There is a schedule for mosque when they have a prayer. It's a lot of cars come at the same time and one hour later they're gone. So that's how it works. Well, I look at their schedule, it's sometimes during the day, morning, sometimes morning, sometimes night. And Ramadan is different, so I, I can't help, but they have weekly, weekly prayer. Some of them are more people, some of them are less people. That doesn't take very long, okay? There is, we have plenty of parking over there. I never seen, there is no parking, there is a little bit of parking on Dutch, there is parking lot over the bridge. Not sure, you know, how to deal with that at this point, but couple cars, you know. And also we plan to, you know, I'm talking to some teenagers, you know, and people, guys in the neighborhood. I figured out that younger people are more willing to, you know, they're more interested, they're interested to work, you know. So I plan to teach, you know, couple people, you know, maybe more than couple, but to work at least part-time and maybe if they like it, you know. But I have to show them from the very beginning, few things. This requires training, you have to have feeling how to do this. When you work in bakery, you need to, and grill, you need to have good feeling on what you're doing. So I'm thinking it's better to start with someone who's not experienced. And, and they may have desire and if we are successful, you know, they will be successful too.
Can you clarify, I know that there were concerns from neighbors as to whether at some point you might want to serve liquor on premise. And I understand that would be a separate, you know, separate approval process, but is that part of what you would hope and envision going forward?
Okay, so at the first meeting, I believe it was in June, we had fifth word meeting and everyone who follows fifth word who wanted to come, they came with maybe sixty people there and they were asking the same question at the very first meeting. I just, you know, my plan was food, you know, so I really didn't think of this and I wasn't really ready for this. So, so to me was a bit confusion, you know. Then this thing came up a couple weeks ago again. So I can tell you, I'm not, it's not my plan to, to serve liquor over there. It was never my plan and I was told you are not gonna make any money, you will have to serve liquor and this. No, if I, if I have to serve liquor, I already lost the game because I planned to sell inexpensive food. And so I, I think if it's food is inexpensive and, and tasty, then, you know, I might have customers, actually. So liquor, I mean, liquor is liquor, I don't know. I mean, people like to consume it, you know, they can take it, they can consume it. But I mean, I, I'm not experiencing this issue, so I don't know. This is something I.
So then just to clarify.
Too late for me to start with this, you know, developing liquor, so I don't know.
So then just to clarify, your plan is not to serve liquor? Okay, thank you.
I mean, I have no problem with people drinking responsibly, bottle whatever, glass of wine and I don't want any enemies, you know.
Can I ask a little bit about who's actually running the business since you are primarily a general contractor? Who's actually running the business? You're running the business as well?
I plan to do this, running the business until we get it rolled out nicely.
Okay, so you're the, so you're the general manager and you'll be there every day?
I will be certified in sanitation and all this, I was already. You know, it's getting harder and harder to build.
Yes, it is.
Why? There is no land, no land left. Whatever left is extremely unreasonable. Whoever buys it supposed to not even break even anymore. We have, we have.
So your plan is to, so your plan is to actually be the general manager? And so you're, you're onsite and you're, that's the plan?
Yeah, 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 family, you know, everyone has to help. And once, you know, people start working, I think it's gonna get easier. It's hard to roll out because what we want to do, this is not shawarma place. It's not Middle Eastern, what people think it's like completely Middle Eastern because it's across the street from the mosque. I never thought of that, so it's not. So what it is, is shawarma is, you know, dry pieces that come of the diner when diner rolls and it comes off and you have shawarma. Okay, could be juicier or not juicier. So if there is no people, shawarma is dry. If there is a lot of people online, shawarma is juicy. So our plan is different. So what we have is marinated chunks of meat, which is cubed, okay? Or in certain size, it's marinated and stored in refrigerator. And let's say you come and you order, you want to order lunch, like something, couple shish kebabs. We call it shashlik or something in Turkish, there are many names for this. In Asia, it's called kusha, they call it differently. Anyway, you order it, so you place an order. We plan to serve pork, by the way, so it's going to be chicken, pork and lamb, okay? Not sure about beef. I have hard time with beef shish kebabs, they don't come out right. So pork, chicken and lamb comes out just fine. There also will be something we call kibodeh or in.
It sounds, it sounds like from this that you have some experience in the industry. Have you, have you had a restaurant in the past?
Huh?
Have you had a restaurant in the past?
Yeah, I had a bakery, yeah.
You had a bakery?
Yeah.
For how many years were you, did you have that bakery?
For three years, but then my landlord had bunch of problems. It was next realty and it was next to Sports Authority. I didn't know where the problem started, but it started with EPA that they gave us. We spent a lot of money on construction there. And, and suddenly in three years, we had EPA and they said there was a little plant, like dry cleaners plant and they had some remediation, deal with insurance and I could not have oven over there. My oven was on the ground and it was built in. And they had to buy us out of the list and after that, it, there, they fell apart. It's owned by a guy who used, wanted to drive for Congress.
So this is your second restaurant and so you have experience running a restaurant?
Yeah, first time was hard, you know.
First time was hard, the second time will be easy?
I think, at least I know, you know, how things work completely.
That's right.
And I was wholesaling to a bunch of stores when we had it. So I had to deal with a lot of, you know, with this store owners, which is pretty hard, type like values.
Can I ask a question, can I ask a question about the patio? Do you have any intention of having any sort of sound system back there or music playing?
No, however, someone told me that would be nice to have a meeting there sometimes.
A meeting?
Yeah, like have something private and I was thinking, you know, could be a good idea. My, my primarily, you know, is to sell food, you know, and it's a fast service, fast casual, between fast casual and casual because it takes five to ten minutes.
Okay.
So.
But you're not planning on any sort of banquets or any sort of large gatherings like that, is that correct? You don't plan on closing?
There is no room over there and it wasn't my plan. I need to get extremely insanely popular, you know, for. I need to get extremely insanely popular, you know, for someone to come up with this idea, that's all. It has to be insanely popular, I'd be happy if I make something there, and it works. However, I think if it works, if it works in this environment, well, in restaurant industry is, is not doing well right now. Okay, and I'm very knowledgeable about all this, but it's not doing well. Because everyone is using low interest to build new locations, and-
Are there any other questions from the board?
I, I have a question, Mr. Katz. Your hood is on the east side, next to residential buildings. The smells that are gonna be coming out of your restaurant, which way shall they be flowing?
Which way what?
Which way shall they go?
I don't know, I don't understand your question. Which way shall they go, shall they who?
The smells.
Ah, the smells? Well, hard to say. I will be cooking soups over there and grilling meat.
I think, I think the more specific question is the vent through the roof. Well, is it, is the plan for it to be on the east side, or on the west side?
The hood?
The vent, where the, where the hood exhausts through the roof.
Oh, it's through the top, it's going through, be through the top, I'm gonna build over-
Definitely through the top. But is it on the east side of the building, or on the west side of the building?
Further to the east, maybe, maybe three, four feet most, maybe four feet away. But I'm gonna build higher, I'm gonna build a parapet on that side, and make it higher, by four feet higher.
Make the parapet higher?
Yeah, and then add the parapet.
Okay.
Okay, this front, hold on, okay, is that area where customer?
Don't forget to go back to the microphone, please.
Yeah, so customer area?
Thank you.
It's going, so the plan is, it's right now 132 inches height on the bottom of the top joints, there are two joints. So top joints is, bottom joints is more of a decorative, so top joints is 132 over here. So we plan to raise it, raise it, but maybe like four feet over here, this area. And so it's gonna be much higher, and then build parapet above it, to put joints, like a deck, roof deck over here, so walk in very high ceiling. And this will be like much higher, so it will be-
But your, your hood, your hood is on the east side. That's where your residential is. On the west side, you have the park. If your vent is going straight up, it will dissipate, but it will follow the wind. So you, you need to try to do something to avoid getting your neighbors any smells, one, that they're not used to, and two, that they might not like.
Okay, so here is what I was thinking. I have 10 feet over there, at the hood area, there is 10 feet, okay? My parapet will be, will start, it will be closer to 17 over here, on this side.
Right.
And hood will be, I, I mean, the vent, I can offset it. I can offset it a little to this side. But there is a barrier, you know, I'm already creating on that side.
Would you mind flipping to the elevation? Because now you've brought up, you've brought up an interesting question for me, which is when you, when you say you're extending the wall up?
Yeah, parapet, yeah.
Tell me, tell me what you're extending up. Show, show me with the, with the pointer.
Okay, so this is right now, the top of the roof, this line. This is what's going to be higher.
Are you raising the roof structure?
I'm, I'm raising-
You're just raising the parapet?
I, I'm raising part of the roof in front. So, so front, ceiling in front will be higher. When you walk in, instead of 11 feet, I'd like to have closer to 14, 15 over here.
Hold on for just a moment, I'd like-
So in scale?
Yep, no, I understand, I understand completely. You've answered the question, you've answered exactly what I was asking. Just keep going, okay, all right. Sure.
Where's your HVAC, is that on the roof?
Okay, HVAC, it could be two systems. I'm planning, my plan is I want to put split, but split system, which means that condensing unit will be on the roof. And I may be able to get away with five ton. So I will have a regular high-efficiency furnace that will be not on the roof. Or otherwise, I will have to do rooftop. But I will have somewhere in this area, possibly, I have to state this 15 feet, there will be makeup, makeup air unit. Which is, when you turn the hood on, it's automatically picks up the air from outside and brings inside to compensate for loss completely, or almost completely. So that, that is like similar to the heater, I would say. It's just a blower, very powerful blower. Or in winter, it may give you 65 degrees, like really fast.
How will the roof unit be screened?
How it's gonna be screened? It will be screened with a parapet on all sides. And parapet, if you go back to-
The elevation?
Elevation, yeah, I'll show you. Okay, let's say over here is makeup, and over here is, or condensing unit could be on the same. It's also, you know, that's why I want this new ceiling on addition, because I want to have decent ceiling, and also can locate equipment. And over here, it's going to be somewhere at 10 feet. At 11 feet, this is where it's gonna be, and this top is 17. So parapet will be six feet higher. But you will see it as one line, but in front, front of the building, inside will be 15 feet.
So just to be clear, you've got a four to five foot high parapet, and that will be screening the makeup air, the HVAC condensers, and the hood exhaust?
Yeah. Exhaust mean a fan?
Yes.
The fan is not high, it's a box, I say 24 inches.
Right. Absolutely, sure.
Were you planning on installing a scrubber? Or would you be open to installing a scrubber?
I have to, I have to make, you know, drawings, you know, I don't have mechanical drawings yet, okay?
I know, there are concerns about the, the odor coming from the hood. And I believe a scrubber would-
Are there any scrubbers installed that I can look at? I mean, do require them? I mean, it's not like something, this is not fried chicken restaurant, there will be no french fries. You know, like, it's different food.
I understand, but there are concerns about the odors coming from the restaurant.
I have to look if I can incorporate it into hood, because I don't have any drawing, any mechanical drawings, or there is nothing done on mechanical-
I'm not a mechanical engineer, so I wouldn't know where, where or how it would be installed. But I know that in, you know, multi, multifamily, mixed residential, commercial buildings, scrubbers will, will be installed.
Does it work like a filter? I mean, basically?
It filters out the objectionable odors, correct?
Well, I heard of this, but I know I will have to adjust something that I don't have yet. Because there are certain motor, you know, you have to put everything that's gonna, has to work and blow, then I have to change, it lowers the speed actually, you know, then it depends, you know, I will have to change some things.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, and it will probably help, but hard to say, you know, right now. Because I, I don't have anything lined up with this mechanical drawings. And my mechanical engineer is very experienced kind of guy, so. So we may come up with, you know, something, you know, that works. We used to have oven, we used to have oven in Morton Grove store. And I had to approve it with, with UL, I couldn't approve it. But with other company, I approved it. With ATL, I approved the oven with ATL, because Village wanted to be approved. It was not regular oven, because it was built in, and inside of the ground, it was, it was horrible sized and durable, like a big one, seven feet deep, that was making like 50 pounds in 15 minutes of very, very nice bread. And I had to go through all this, but what you're saying, this is not, I just have to do some, you know, some mechanical drawings and figure out all the, all the same. There are some other things possible to do. You can combine units, your equipment, you can combine them together under the hood, and direct them to the hood separately. It's called, not backsplash, it's called differently. And you can minimize it from the, right from under the hood, you can combine them. Kind of like fryer has this piece above it, you can combine several appliances, and separate oven from it, and direct them, you know, there are some ways to do this right now. And this way, you can minimize your makeup unit, because it will require less, you know. So your hood would work differently. You can, there are type one hood, type two hoods, you know, you can separate them. Ovens don't need type one, there is hot appliances, medium appliances. You know, you don't need to, to use all of them, you can separate them, even do two hoods. One type one, one type two. For ovens, type two is okay, you know, so you reduce it. Then already, this is out, so you move this, this shows one hood right now, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any more questions from the ZBA?
I have two questions.
Excellent.
Can we go back to the site plan? So how will public from the park use the restaurant? Are they allowed to enter the backyard, or they have to go through the front door?
Not really, they will have to come in, however-
From the front door?
Yeah, to the front door.
Will they be allowed to take food out of the premises?
If they will be allowed to take food-
Out of the premises?
Yeah, it's a type two restaurant.
Since we applying for type two, they will be able to actually call ahead, or text, use text system. If they are registered and they have phone numbers, they don't even have to order on internet. I came up with a system when, if people are regular customer, they can text you, and if their phone number and their order could be texted to us, and we can make it. And they can come and pick it up, and this way, we will minimize all this, you know, waiting.
So people that will be eating in the backyard, where will their garbage go?
Yeah, there is a station, right here, I put station.
So this is their garbage?
One, no, I have two of them, one here and one here, I showed, you know. This is more convenient location.
Your permanent place for the garbage can is on the east side, is that correct?
Yeah, but I have to separate it, and, and then take it to the, take it in the-
And how will you move the garbage cans from the east side to the street?
Well, I can have door over here, I already showed door over here, so you can roll them in, okay? And take them through the front.
Do you think this is practical?
I, you know, I have no, no, I don't know, you know, I don't have any choice, practical or not, but I have to, to do it somehow, you know.
All the questions that I'm asking, sir, is just my, let's say, my concern is that in certain cases, you or the public will be using the park. And there will, there will be some garbage that inevitably will go to the park. That's my concern, that's why I'm asking you if you can take any precautions to avoid this.
Can I, can I help you on that?
No, I mean, I don't, I don't exactly understand.
Let me help you. The whole, the whole west side of the house, the whole west side of the property is intended to be fenced.
Yeah.
So there is no walking-
No gates.
So there are no gates, there's no walking from the patio to the, to the park. If you want to get from the patio to the park, you walk inside the building, you throw away your garbage, you walk out onto the street, and then you go around the corner.
Yeah, it's not about garbage, but I did put the, I showed the gate when you see 159, okay? I showed like locked gate, just in case, I showed it. I mean, who knows what happened, you know, but-
I think it might, I think it might be best if there was no gate.
Well, it's fine, it's a wall right now, but-
I know, I understand, I understand. Are there any other questions?
I don't know what's, I mean, if it's, what is, if it's better or worse, I have not thought of this.
The west side?
Yeah.
The west side of the property, that's going to be an open fence? Is that what I'm understanding? And just the east and the backside are a closed fence?
I don't know about open fence, what do you mean? When you say open fence, I, I'm getting confused.
So, so what it means is that it's at least 50% open, so that there is a, a slat, and then an opening and a slat?
If it's wrought iron, it would be considered an open fence?
Okay, I'm thinking, we were thinking, we were thinking four feet to have it enclosed, and top to have it open. I cannot tell the material for the top, it could be even plastic, possible, we were considering it.
The, the concern that I have with you having the patio in the back, and you having customers in the back, that means that they're gonna eat, if for some reason, paper towels or their napkin will fly out, it will fly out into the park, parkway, or your neighbors in the back, residential neighbors on, on the east side.
Well, Jenny, Jenny-
So there needs to be a litter collection plan that you have already looked at into to be able to commit right now.
Yeah, we've committed to, we've committed to this 500 feet away.
So that means you're gonna be collecting a lot of stuff in the park? And your customers-
Collecting a lot of stuff in the park?
Yes.
Why?
Because you're next to the park.
Because it's within 250 feet.
Well, uh-
You draw a 250-foot radius around your building, and you are responsible for, for all the-
All the garbage, doesn't matter if it's yours or not.
Okay, so see what happens, you know, what can I tell you? What's so funny? You wanna put all garbage in?
Easy, easy, folks, hang on.
Enjoy, you know, I don't understand, what's so funny?
I'd like a clarification from staff. So we talked a little bit about this idea of the garbage sitting out at the street. Has there been any discussion about letting him build some sort of simplified enclosure on the parkway, so that when the garbage is sitting out, it is not in full view of everyone?
I don't know that that would be a viable option.
Okay.
We generally don't like to locate permanent structures on the parkway.
Yeah.
The situation could be addressed by restricting how long the garbage can be out in the parkway, or restricting that the, if possible, the garbage pickup company rolls it out themselves.
Do the rolling, okay, all right, thanks.
At the, on the east and west sides, the existing building, the main structure, is up against the lot line on both sides?
On the west, on the east side, yes, there is a building, to the east, it's 29 feet away from, from this lot line, yeah. It's a back, it's a back door of three townhomes. They have a driveway over there.
But your building is up against the lot line?
My building is existing, yeah, is up against lot line. They used to have a fence over there, but it's-
So there's no way to move garbage on your property outside the building?
There is no way to move the garbage outside the building, theoretically, no.
Okay.
That's why I came up with a plan that allows me to roll it through, I mean, to roll it through my property. I don't know how they did it, it's building been there for what, 100, no, 90 years? And apparently, there was restaurants there too, for, for a while. How the garbage was removed, I have no idea. Apparently, it was removed somehow, there was, there were many businesses there, you know, check the history. Somehow, they rolled the garbage.
In the past, it was a smaller, smaller overall structure, and the dumpsters were located on the, the backside of the building. And they were able then to just bring them around, or have the garbage company get them from the-
But bring them around how?
They'd have to go off, off-site.
I mean, how bring them around?
They have to go off.
I mean, how?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, you do.
Get an estimate from the neighbors.
They couldn't do it, and they had a plan, and I had no plan. Actually, I came up with a plan, and they had no plan, and it's better right now, so. I mean, they had to roll it through the, there are, there is a walkway over there.
Right.
Right now, so it's on park property, there is a walkway.
Right, I know.
Was, how old is it? I mean, very old. And apparently, they used it walkway, or, you know, to roll, whatever, you know, they roll.
Yeah.
Pretty soon, you know, you know, can do much.
I think we might be done. Are there any more questions from ZBA? Uh, okay.
Commissioner Dubin, you have a question?
Back to you guys.
I'm still confused about the trash situation. Are these going to be old-fashioned metal dumpsters on wheels or did you say that you are now permitted to use garbage receptacles more similar to the residential receptacles?
Yeah, it's going to be like residential.
Okay, thank you.
Several sizes you can pick. And if you drive like on Prairie, around, behind Green Bay, there are some commercial, commercial and the condo building and they have those from Groot, they have regular dumpsters. No dumpsters, I mean, containers. It says Groot on it, so they're, they're, it's not City of Evanston, I mean, okay? I mean, City of Evanston doesn't want to do commercial pickup from what I understand, from what I was told by Wiki. So I don't know why, but-
But that location, there are no, there's no alley running behind any of the businesses there, is there? Everything backs up onto the park, so any kind of trash going out from that street will be sitting in the parkway. And this will, yours would be sitting in the parkway in the containers that are similar to what the residences are using, not the metal dumpsters.
No, I'm not sure about the colors, it's like kind of-
No, 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 I don't mean the colors. I mean, smaller, plastic bins rather than old-fashioned, heavy metal dumpsters on four wheels.
Yeah, I can have as many as I want, you know. I mean, you just can rotate them and I wish I could roll into the program with City of Evanston and I may have to talk about it, but somehow I was told that it's customary that we just didn't do it. But on this particular street, they have to roll it out to the front, which is kind of rare, but that's how this street is. I mean, there are four houses, basically, that do this and they roll it out to the front, to the grass and on certain days of pickup and it is, it is what it is. Maybe there was an alley there before, I don't know. I have a feeling there was an alley.
Any additional questions? If there are no questions, then thank you, Mr. Katz.
You're welcome. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Katz, having completed his testimony, the rules of the Plan Commission require that I now announce that any person or group with an ownership or leasehold interest within 1,000 feet of the property may be granted a continuance for the purpose of presenting evidence to rebut testimony which has been given by the petitioner. That request for a continuance must be in writing. It can be submitted anytime from now until we close the public record. If a request for continuance was made, we would take as much testimony tonight as we could. The meeting would then be continued to a date certain. On that date, we would resume where we had left off with the testimony of the person requesting the continuance. If you testify tonight, you could not testify in the continued hearing and if you are under oath tonight, you would remain under oath for that session. Do we have a sign-in sheet, staff? All right, we will ask for testimony in the order in which you have signed in tonight. I would ask that you hold your comments to five minutes and if someone who testifies before you makes the points you want to make, you could affirm them rather than repeating them, would save us some time. The first person signing in is Rodney Green. Mr. Green, welcome back.
Thank you. My name is Rodney Green and I have been a resident here for the past 20-some years, since 1988. And I listened to the, the gentleman who wants to bring the restaurant to the, to the community, but it was stated that majority of the residents were in favor of this restaurant and I would like to disagree with that because most of the residents within the area of the restaurant, proposed restaurant, were not contacted. We heard it by ear, by someone else who may be passing on. So the total residents do not want a change in ruling on the R3 to a B1 because they feel as though that will cause adverse traffic into the, to the, to the community. As well as, say, he also stated that there was no rodents, but I walk my mother-in-law's dog at 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock in the morning and I've seen raccoons, possums, and skunks and rats also surveying that area right now without any food there. There have been food thrown out by people who may be in the park or whatever and I'm concerned about the same food be there with the restaurant being there. The other question is, the, the, the idea of bringing your waste out through the property seems to me that it'd be a little kind of contamination to the people's food who may be in there. And there is no alley to, to get any garbage out. There's no way to rectify even the grease that he may be using, you got to get rid of the grease as well, if he's going to fry anything. And so there's, there's concerns about that same thing. We feel that there, the property is not the best fit for restaurant in this area. And so the ones I've talked to, even the ones next door to where the restaurant's going to be built, said they weren't contacted nor were they talked about it and they do not want a restaurant is there as well. I feel as though this restaurant would not benefit the community. If anything, it would be a deterrent. So I would, you said I need to write a continuance, letter for continuance to go on or do I do that now? When do I, when should I present that?
Well, if you request a continuance, Mr. Green, this is an odd, a curious-
Yes.
-situation. A continuance is requested in order to present rebutting testimony to something you have heard and testimony which you cannot be prepared to give tonight.
Right.
I suppose you could request a continuance, but you could not testify at the next meeting.
Testify again, okay. Okay. So get it all in tonight.
If you can get it all in tonight, I think that'd be good.
Okay. The, I know there have been other entrepreneurships in the area that, that would use that building for a hairdresser, a little grocery store, but to look at what's going on there and it's being close to the park, again, we're concerned about the smells, we're concerned about the garbage, we're concerned about the, the delivery. Now, there's going to have to be some delivery. He says that maybe they've taken their own, but if they have to use a truck or something, where are we going to park? There is not parking along that time, even with the mosque being there. There's limited parking because the churches, well, five churches down the street that also have meetings all two in the week. Brown Street is crowded when everybody come in, so there is limited parking there. And if you got to park there to go into the restaurant to bring your food out, you still have to, I guess, be there for a short time or leave, but there is not ample parking. And I don't think that, I don't think the, the, the research has been strong enough to rectify or to make sure that this restaurant should survive there. That's all I can say, I don't, right now I can't think of anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Betty Esther.
I used to live at 2114 Darrell when the area was changed to R3. We, and it stayed vacant. I worked with a group where we tried to buy the lot behind the building after it was burnt down to do affordable housing. They told us we could not do that because we did not have enough land, because part of that land where the house that was there before was part of the city property, a metropolitan water recreation property that the city had leased. So we couldn't do the affordable housing. And we had a cute little house. Also too, there was a business that came, he made carpentry cabinets and things, and he wanted to open the business. He bought it and we told him, no, he couldn't, he tried to change the zoning. We bought that, they did not change the zoning because one, with what he was trying to do, he used chemical in his work and the smells from the chemicals permeated out into the community. In looking at this here and one question I asked and still not clear on is what is the property line for this property? And if I'm looking at the black line and it says it's 159 and then they had another survey that said it was 129. Well, they said 129, that was that, and so it wasn't clear. The people at Darrell did not know where the city property line began and this property lines would be, where they are but at, you know, how close, how far in is the city onto that? So we don't know whether that 27 feet is not part of the city or not. With that hood on that side, that's on the side where the neighbors are. The parking lot, they have four feet. So anything he does, he have to bring it down their driveway to take it to the street so that if he's taking something out and a neighbor has to be side, well, oh, I forgot something, I gotta go back home, he's coming out, you want to get in. So one of y'all have to give away to the other end. So you are infringing then on their right to be able to use what was considered their driveway. The side to the east, west, the west side, he has a building that is shown in the other picture that is not there. He's going to build that. And so is that the part where, the part that he's going to build? Is that the kitchen prepared area? That's where he's preparing the food? Then he's going to bring it out of there to cook there? So it's kind of confusing and not clear. And he says he has a door and there's that little door, I guess that what that cut-in is supposed to be in the part that says where the 159 is? So is that the door coming out to the building that will then take him onto the ground? I'm not sure, because then they have the other property line. So if he's, they coming out that way, then why would they come out that way? And he doesn't have a walkway from that patio, kind of down that side? He can't do that because he don't have enough ground or footage on the west side. So he has to, I'd be asked in the city to use city property so I can have a walkway so the people can come from our patio and not walk through the restaurant or the kitchen to get out. And I wouldn't want to do that at anybody's restaurant. This, he says, he did this back in, started this back in October of 2005, of 2016. In 2016, it's the impression that there was supposed to be housing there, no restaurant, a restaurant showed up in the Darrell picture in February of 2007. I watched very closely what goes on in the fifth ward and Alderman Holmes is here to attest to that. So this did not come forth. When the community heard this again, is when we had our new Alderman and she says, oh, we're going to have a restaurant here, the people want this restaurant. And we said, restaurant, what restaurant? There was, to her credit, some people she did talk to, but also not to her credit, she did not talk to all of the people in the community. The people that stayed in the 2100 block of Darrell and in the 1800 block of Simpson fought hard to make that in R3 because we figured if that building came down and we couldn't put a house there for affordable housing, we could turn that into green space and have more space for the parking. So to put a restaurant there that did not do any market research to say it's going to last longer than three years, has not been done. His restaurant that he had in the 9700 block on Demstir closed in 2017. It wasn't clear as to why he closed. He served dumpling, soup, and shish kebab. He talked about a bakery, but the bakery, I guess, was downtown somewhere in Chicago and not a restaurant on Demstir. So he kind of did a little of both, a little things out of everything and the people referred to it as a little hole in the wall. So that wasn't what I would think about having there. So I think until it's really clear, hopefully to me and also to you, where is the city property line in terms of this property and to make sure that this property is not sitting on city property. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I, no, thank you, Ms. Esther. I'm going to then ask Melissa Klotz, am I correct that the black line, east and west, marked 159 is the property line?
You are correct. Following the questions raised by neighbors about the property lines, staff looked into it and did find a plat of survey from roughly 100 years ago that noted the property was 152 feet long. So we then went and pulled plats of survey from surrounding properties and the other properties do show that it is 159. So assuming the property line extends the same as the other properties, it is 159. However, either way, the discrepancy of seven feet does not affect this proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, members of the Plan Commission and zoning. Carlos Sutton, I reside at 1821 Darrell Avenue. I'm opposed to the request for, or variance for the Plan Project 17 PLND-0037 for the building at 1829 Simpson. I moved in the 2000 block on Dodge in 1946 and remained there to 1950. I remember going to the grocery store and the only thing I remember being fried was hair at the beauty shop next door. It has never been a restaurant and this referral to this building being a restaurant has never occurred at that site. I have concerns for variances and especially when they affect an individual rather than the community. Planning and zoning are important regulations to protect property interests and neighborhood integrity and consistency. I have concerns for variances for individuals that will adversely affect the current residents and the community as a whole. Do we have to look any further than on television today to see the damage and health concerns of a city not having strictly enforced zoning? This variance has not been properly planned. There are too many opportunities for affecting congested parking and traffic, litter, environmental removal of ref- removal of refuse, no metal container, and where were the trucks backed up to get it? Encroachment on our parkland and open space. The building traditionally was a beauty parlor, as I said before, a grocery store, and a carpenter's workshop. We're near a waterway, community gardens, recreational areas, and the fencing will block open space. This variance is inappropriate for this site. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton.
I'm not 100 years old, but I might look like it. I grew up on Foster Street. My mother grew up on Foster Street and she would be 98 at this point. She also remembers the grocery store and the beauty shop there at this site. And there was never a grocery, there was never a restaurant there. There was for a brief time, a Snackery that moved from Emerson. They sold candy, those kinds of things. No one sat there to get anything. So, and nothing was cooked. I don't want to discourage you or rain on your parade, but you said that you were a contractor. And I think that a restaurant is just not there. It's taking a park space and it's right next to homes where people live. And if you're a contractor, I think that you could, Mr. Katz, I think you could put some kind of housing that would look just exactly like what is to the east of where this building is. I took notes as you spoke, so I might be a little off when some things. But we don't need to lose another historic site for the 5th Ward. And we've lost so many already. Twigs Park is very important to the 5th Ward and that taking part of it for a parking lot or for a driveway or anything at this point is wrong. We did have a driveway when there was a house behind it. That was before the park was developed and people were there in the park without it being developed. I lived, as I said, I lived over there. Rats were a major problem. They still are. And I think you were talking about the smell. The smells would not bother the people as much as they would entice animals to come there. So, having a rear patio would just invite trash and garbage to be thrown in the back and in the side of the, not out of sight of the neighborhood, but inviting to rodents that would come there when they hear that. So, I just feel like it's just not, would just not fit in the neighborhood. A restaurant would not fit in the neighborhood at that point. So, I'd like for you to use some of your other talents to do something that would benefit the neighborhood, not restaurant, but maybe some housing that looks exactly like what's to the east. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giles.
Chair, who wants to ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Katz, you want to address a question to Ms. Giles? Question? Question?
Question, yes. You want me to build something that looks like next door to the east? Do you realize how big is that property to the east? It's 80 feet wide.
Yes, it could be a house. It could be, it could be.
Property to the east is three small townhomes on the lot that is 80 feet wide. My lot is 27. You know, we tried so hard to put something there. It's not easy to say, you know? You're saying I have some talent to do that? Yeah, it's hard. I don't know what could be put there.
But you could do, you could do that. Other houses have been squeezed in Evanston, not by you, but by others.
No, you just said, you know, next door. You compare it to the next door, which is 80 feet wide. It has three small townhomes.
80 feet for your restaurant?
Okay, Mr. Katz, I think she has answered your question. And I think you've answered her question. Tina Foster.
I didn't know it was about to speak, but I'll go ahead and speak. And just from Mr. Green, I live at 2026 Dodge in Evanston, and I've seen rats coming across Dodge. Seen cat, my neighbor's cat, in my yard playing with rats. And I'm very concerned about the trash. And it's going to be a takeout restaurant, concerned about people just hanging out there like they used to do at the Darrow and Simpson. Been really concerned about, you know, the aesthetics of the place. Is it really going to enhance the neighborhood or is it just going to be a little fast carry-out food, which isn't something we need in our neighborhood?
Definitely parking is an issue. I have parked one car on the street and, because I don't like to always come in through the garage because somebody shot bullet holes through my garage. So, I'm not even comfortable using a garage that I built after I lived there. And so, I like to park on the front, but often I'm not able to park in the front of my own home with one car.
Thank you.
There's an empty store down the street.
Madeline Decray, do I have that right?
Hi, everyone. Hi, people out there. Let me just say, start off saying this, is that I think it really would have been more beneficial to Mr. Katz and the 5th Ward person, all the person now, if she would have presented it in a different form, a different way. I think Carlos touched on certain things here and Priscilla. They've been here a long time. I think they were born here. But what I'm trying to say is that we have lost a lot in our community, okay? The Muslim building, we wanted to see affordable housing there for people to live in the 5th Ward. They have moved, many people have moved out, which I know you all know already. The Simpson Street where Walgreen took over, okay, that's beneficial. That helps all of us. I can understand that. When I first came here to Evanston, it was Fanny's Restaurant. They told me I couldn't go there, but I wanted to go in there anyway. They were going to have to tell me, but people discouraged me not to go there. But the place was packed, had to be all those cars there. I say, why in the heck would this Italian lady? They told me she was Italian. Was she Italian? But anyway, I'm not trying to be facetious here. But the reason why I said that is because a lot of people say that, you know, somebody can cook better spaghetti than Fanny. But my point is, there was a lot of good things she did for this community in the 5th Ward. She hired people. And for people, Mr. Katz, with how small it is, it's in consideration, looking at it in a different way, I guess. But I, it's hurting me. Well, let me just, let me just make these points right quick so I won't forget it. Okay, Mr. Katz, in my opinion, do not seem to know exactly what he wants to do with that restaurant. And it is scaring me. You guys did a great job in asking questions, okay? Daffer, whoever was on this planning project, whatever, you can learn from this committee because they asked a lot of questions and you all did not. Did a good job, but you did not ask a lot of questions, in my opinion. Now, he says he want grill. Next week, you want a deep fryer. So, what is it going to be? We need to know what is going to happen in our neighborhood. Simple. We need to know. Now, I have to be fair because I live right around the corner, 2039 Brown. And I know that area very well because me and my children lived at that park. We've been having an Easter egg hunt since the 60s, believe it or not, okay? Continually. When it was raining, which was one or two times, we had it in the house. But the rest of those days, they were at that park. So, that park is very special to me. Now, I'm asking also, did Mr. Katz, if you run out of money, do you plan to ask for some money over here from the city?
You asking me?
No, I'm sorry. I'm just, you can answer and they can ask you or whatever, but I'm just, I'm just asking because they're running a meeting. So, I'm just turning around asking you in all respect the ways. And the reason why I'm asking that is because I remember at the Chicken and Waffle, there were some people who have the restaurant on Demster now said, okay, if Chicken and Waffle can get 50 grand, I can get it too. Okay? So, I'm going to leave that alone. That's for you all to consider because if you don't, we're going to come back on you. Okay, the next thing is, what happens to the, to that building, Mr. Katz, if it doesn't work out? If you decide, hey, am I getting enough business here? Maybe I want to do this, maybe I want to do that, maybe I want to add liquor or something. But more so, what if you leave? Are you going to raise the money up so high that we can't even consider buying that property? $70,000, we did not know about, okay? Somebody should have told us this. Because when I was asking, it was $390,000. And I'm saying, why? So, we have miscommunication here. And I don't know if that's my fault or maybe a different reason why the city did not want us to know that. Just like the city did not want us to know about that building with the Muslim building there. Ask Ms. Holmes.
Ms. Decray, the Muslim building is not on our agenda tonight.
We're talking about my neighborhood.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay? Now, if my, I'm giving you comparison. We do not want things coming in, and I'm going to get upset. We do not want things coming into our neighborhood just like the 7th Ward, the 6th Ward, the 1st Ward, et cetera, okay? We will fight, I will fight for the right thing for that community with my grandchildren and my children, okay? That's my point and what I'm saying, okay? Muslim, that building is a part of the 5th Ward. And we lost it because miscommunication from the city, all right? I'm going to leave that alone. If you think I'm lying, check out the minutes. Okay, the patio. What are we going to do with the patio in the wintertime? Are we going to keep it open for the animals to come out there? Nope. We're going to close it up? And the baseball, there is a baseball field there that the children play baseball. That soccer thing there that's put there, and I shouldn't say thing, but it's just there. They put it there. But there was flag football played over there sometime, okay? So, it's not like it's empty. The garden is there. We are losing Twigs Park. And we also need a fence there. Didn't anybody say that, okay? With the children there. That's another thing that may be considered about the restaurant. I like diversity, but I like fair diversity coming into my neighborhood, okay? I may not have the money like some people run this little town, but I do care. I do care about the 5th Ward, okay? All I ask is for fairness. And let me just say this real quick. There was a restaurant there, believe it or not, because they got meals from there, okay? Real quick, it did not last long though, okay? Joy was there. He did have candy there. He had ice cream there. My children ate ice cream there, like they ate on Emerson Street. But there was a quick where they used a deep fry. I mean, that should.
Ms. Decray.
Okay, I didn't mean it, okay? Maybe I'm not a, let me just make this.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I held everyone else to five minutes and I need you to five and you got about two to go.
Oh, two more minutes? Why did you say that? Two more minutes? I have two more minutes? Anyway, you have to know where I'm coming from to say that. But, but no, I just want fairness, okay? For the restaurant. There was something there when I first came here. It was a beauty salon and it was a meat place where Mr. Hickenbottom.
Hickenbottom.
So, meat, okay? And there was another one up the street there, but I think that was the business district. Father Bear, okay? So, but my point is, yeah, there was a cooking there. I do remember that. And I think her name was Ms. Mayfield. I could be wrong. But I think it was Ms. Mayfield who took after Joy, who had the ice cream and the candy stuff, okay? So, I'm going to stop right now. But I've always, let me just say this. I visualize that little area there. And because my son, my oldest son who died, he said, MD, he said, you know what? We can have a quick hot dog stand there. That's what he said. Because the master plan is they're going to have yachts and boats coming up there and we can make some money in there. I said, you know what? You have some good idea. Find out how much it costs. Too much money. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Holmes.
I was thinking that I signed the wrong list because I thought.
Well, that's, that's okay. Now, we got you down. Welcome to that side of the desk.
I know. Thank you. Since I'm on the oath, two things. I said it at Daffer last week and I want to say it to you all. I don't like this new system of bundling this together. I want to speak about the zoning and the zoning only because if I talk about the restaurant then I get really, I have a lot to say about that. But it's very difficult. I don't know about other residents. I was absolutely confused until I figured out last week, well, at least Johanna said, well, you know, we sort of bundle it together now. That, for me as a resident, is really confusing. Because the zoning is a whole different issue, which is what I'm going to speak about this evening. And then you go to the special use and stuff. But we need to get the zoning out of the way first. So, that's, I just want to voice that complaint. So, when you all think about doing this, think about that. There are other people out there like me, I'm sure. The other thing since I'm on the oath, I want to clarify something. As a former alderman, I received calls last October from the staff about the building having been bought and they wanted to put housing. And the request, if I remember correctly, was to put a second story onto the building. Is that correct? And they were requesting like a cup cut, if I remember correctly. And my suggestion, I was very excited because everybody knows nobody wants empty buildings in their ward, at least I know I did. And that building had been empty, but when people say that it was vacant, it wasn't because Mr. Phelps ran his whole business there the whole time up until the time he sold it. Now, it wasn't legal, but he was there and you can ask the neighbors because all I get to do is go by and see it day or night. And he was in there with the bars up, but he was in there. We all learned how to notice his car, knew he was there. I reported to the city many times. Several people from the community wanted to purchase it. He wanted the same purchase price that he had bought the building for, which was, I believe, it was 207,000. I can't remember the exact amount. So, we were all shocked when we understood that it now sold for 70,000. No one knew that. Twice, I went to the city council to ask them to purchase the building because in 2005, when I became elected, and he had purchased the building and wanted to change the zoning and the neighbors were really not for that. I wanted to help him out, just hoping the city would buy it, but they didn't. I also asked the city to do that last October, well, last, I believe it was last, maybe July, before, when it first went on sale, because it went on sale as a commercial property. And we wanted to make sure that people knew that it wasn't a commercial property, but that it was in an R3 rather than a B1 so that no one would get duped like Mr. Phelps had gotten duped. At least that's what he said. So, I wanted to just clarify that. I have never received in my 12 years, Mr. Katz, a phone call or an email that I did not return. I'm very proud of that record. I've never received a phone call or an email or a request from Mr. Phelps. I did get information from the staff. So, I just want to be clear on that. Now, I just want to talk about the zoning of that area. The resident, I don't live there. I live in the 5th Ward. I don't live in that particular area. But at that time in 2005 and 2006, there were a lot of homeowners, lost their homes. Some of those properties have been bought up now by developers and they are rental properties rather than being homeowner properties. And I'm talking only about the 1800 block of Simpson on the south side of the street. The residents were very strong about keeping the business district, which runs from Darrow and Simpson to Green Bay and Simpson. That is the business district. This little cutout there is right in the middle of the resident. This little cutout there is right in the middle of the residential district next to the park, and the mosque is there. There's nothing else there that is business, um, that would even be supportive of this. My concern about zoning changes is that I don't think the residents know that when you change that zoning from R3, and there are, I believe it's 14 or 15 things that could go into that as R3, if people wanted to, housing being one of them, that if it changes to B1, there are 52 other things that could go into that space. Some permitted, some by special use, such as a micro distillery, a craft brewery. And I'm just saying, you know, we have to know that sometimes if things don't work out, then it could be sold. And it's already B1, so then it could, those kinds of things could happen. Not trying to do scare tactics, but just being real. People can go on the website, pull this up, and see the kinds of things that could go into a B1 district. So that's why I am here. I told residents that I would come, I would voice my opinion and speak for those who can't come out, who have not felt that they had a voice, in terms of only being renters, but they do have a voice, and I said that to them, that they are not comfortable with that being a restaurant, less than 50 feet. I believe it's 29, I heard him say tonight, 29. I had said 25 at Dapper, away from those townhomes that are right there. It's right in their face. And, um, this zoning, I think, would have a really bad, changing the zoning to this, would have a real bad effect on our community. I will support anything as long as it's in the zoning, uh, in the area of zoning that it is already zoned for. And as I said, there are many things that could go there, and housing was one that we were very excited about having. And I can't tell you what happened. All I know is that things stopped until after the election, and then they picked up again in February. So, and at that time, it was gonna be a restaurant. So, that's all I've heard, that's all I know. But I certainly think that you should think really hard about making a zoning change in that particular neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes. Is there anyone who wishes to testify who did not sign in? Right, this being the case...
Mayor.
Ah.
Bear with me, I'll get there. Lorraine Morton. I live at 2102 Darrell, which is just in the same block as this facility that you're talking about. I don't know if you've been down there to look at it or not, but right next door is public housing. I was there. Talked to a lady who had, there are three apartments there. And I talked to the lady personally, in one of them, who is certainly not in favor of this project. And if you were to go there, you would not be in favor of it either, because it isn't practical. Even if the restaurant had gold bars in it, it just isn't the place for it. Now, the people who live in that public housing are good people. They're doing, their lives are being subsidized by the Cook County Housing Authority, but they're Evanston residents, and we should consider what we're doing to them. In the front, no, this is back of it, there's a driveway, which is very close to that building. Even if the owner wanted to have a driveway there, he couldn't, because he doesn't own the property. Also, this is a city of trees. I wish you would look at those great big, I think I counted five huge trees that are in the pathway, if you wanted to build something there. So I think you might want to reexamine that. I don't know if you've heard any, have you heard anything from Cook County about what they feel about it? Well, you probably will, I hear from them. But I want to say this, and I'm gonna get out of it. Listen, my daughter's gonna kill me when I get home, I guess. But you know, my heart is in that location. The, the property where the Cook County Housing Authority is, used to belong to Lorraine Morton. It was Lorraine Morton who sold that property to the Cook County Authority, so they could build something for people who didn't have the means. Cook County did a very good job in building that facility. Cook County has, we never had any problem with the way it looked. Most people don't even know that it's there, because they did such a wonderful job. Now, I know my, that previously, that property only, in my time, and I've, I've been here since 1953, a long time, and saw it when Higginsbottom was down there, when they had a hair salon that they were talking about. So I think I know the area and the people, but the thing that I think that might be of some service to this committee, when Over the Rainbow wanted to put a building there, you know what they did? They came to the alderman. The alderman brought into my house, people. They were notified, come and hear what the Over the Rainbow has to say. The first time they came, they wanted some other facility. The people in the neighborhood in my house said, no. Then Over the Rainbow came. Again, the neighbors were brought in to hear what that proposal was. So they had an idea to talk about it, before it even came to the city or anyplace else, which I thought was a very good thing. And now, you're caught as a group here. You're caught with people coming before you, saying that the committee, that the Fifth Ward wants that and all that stuff. But you know one thing? You know better. Everybody sitting up here knows better. And you also know that the Fifth Ward has had a revival, that started some years ago, and everything that was put on Ashley, Ashland, and up in that area, has been tops. Everything in it has been tops. Even the floors have tiles. Even the faucets are the best that you can buy. In other words, we're not putting trash in, in the Fifth Ward. And we're all very grateful for those who have done it, because we know what a good job they've done. So I'm saying to you, one of the best things you could do, that building is on a very small lot, because the lot that I sold to them was a lot and a half. That's why it is so close, uh, you know, to that building. There's no space in there, because it's just, that's the way it was. Because that was a long time ago, when you built houses, you know? So think about it. I won't be here to see what happens. I'm an old lady now, on my way out instead of on my way in. But I have a daughter, and I have two grands, so they'll be here with you, uh, to do it. So I have full confidence that if you ride by there, if you see that that building is very close to the driveway going into public housing. So parking there is, is almost, you, you, there's nothing you can do with it. Now, I heard a mention of the, the parking lot across from the Nature Center. I guess I've been around too long. That, it was agreed at the time when a church was a building where the, where the mosque is now. And when they wanted to build that church, the problem came before the committee as to whether or not there was parking. It was agreed, it was a special agreement, that the people who were using that facility, and it was supposed to have been a church at that time, that their parking, they could park at the park, uh, the space across from the Nature Center. But that didn't say that anybody that went into that space later could do the same thing. So unless there is something here, then maybe that I don't know about. But it was a special use for the church, years and years and years ago. So, thank you all for listening, to all the people who have been here. Take a look, drive by it, look at it. Look at those big trees that are down right there in front of that public housing. Think about the people who live in public housing. The lady told me, she said, you know, we get decent mice that come from the, the, the Tweed Park. And are very much opposed to having that out there, in that facility there. So now, I've said what I wanted to say. And thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
And thank all of you for the good work that you're doing, and your smartness. I was so glad that someone said you were asking these questions. And I watch you on TV, by the way, so it's good to see you in person.
Thank you, mayor. All right, if there is no further testimony...
I don't sign it.
Name and address, please.
My name is...
Did we swear you earlier?
I sat there, I did raise my hand, because I was working up the nerve. My name is Daphne Watson, and I live at 1822 Simpson. Um, I would like to request that this zoning thing be withdrawn, because I did not know that, number one, the building was sold, number two, I had no knowledge of any so-called meetings that were taking place. I got this notice in the mail last week, after I found out through the Evanston Patch that there was gonna be a restaurant. And I'm really disappointed and offended, actually. My husband is a lifelong Evanston resident. We purchased our house in 2010, from, I guess, some slumlord or something, but we're happy where we are. And yes, it's unfortunate that there's not an open door in that facility, but yeah, I've talked to the guy who builds stuff in there every once in a while, and, you know, I think it's a great community, um, and the park is terrific. I use it almost every day. But all of this stuff, all of this glitz and everything, that's not good for us. We don't need that. That's a dangerous intersection. There's no crosswalks, there's no traffic control. I walk my dogs, and my kids ride their bikes, there's tons of high school kids back and forth, there's, you know, fender benders and all kinds of stuff. There's no parking. I have a garage, I don't park on the street, but anytime of day or night, there's no parking. Um, I, I, and the bottom line is, if you're in the community, serve the community. And I don't see how this is beneficial to the community. The owners will take their proceeds to another community, and that's not right. We need a place on that side of town that is going to uplift and help, bring light, and we don't need a place to just spend more money. That's, that's enough black communities. We need a place to cultivate one another. We need a neighborhood, community. My children have outgrown family focus in Fleetwood, and having some sort of annex, or a library annex, or just a place for kids, you know, there's kids come across Bridge Street from North Evanston, and they come through there every single day. We need something to help make this community sustain, because when this business fails like their other businesses have failed, what next? Then we're gonna have something else there, or it's gonna be really vacant this time, and a whole bunch of empty space, and dilapidation, and what's next? It's gonna, I moved to the Fifth Ward because the Fifth Ward has a history of having the most black homeowners in the country at one time. And I chose to move here. My husband was born and raised here, but I'm not from here. But I want to be a part of this. But I cannot be a part of this, and I have to, then, for however many months, the inconvenience to get around in my neighborhood, just to get around into the garage is bad enough. Trying to, you know, come around school hours, if it's raining, and you got, you know, 120 cars coming through, whatever, and then, you know, midday prayers and stuff like that. I don't have a problem necessarily with the mosque, or anything like that. But we don't need another place to try to draw people from other communities over here to spend money and leave, and leave their mess. There's a family raccoon that lives in the sewer in front of my house. We don't need any more of this. And the, you know, the, whatever Ramies or whatever happened over there, go move down there. You know, I don't, I don't know, but why here? I, I just don't understand. I think the zoning, this whole request was false, and I just think it should be withdrawn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you this? Can I take one more?
My name is Elizabeth Brasher. I actually came to this with somewhat of an open mind. And I said, well, let's give it a chance and see what's going on, and what's, what he really wants to do. What I found, as I listened, was that you all did ask a lot of questions. And what I heard from Mr. Katz was a lot of, well, I don't know, and I'm, I might do this, I might do that. So that's a concern for me. I also feel that when the word gets out, that you are carrying garbage through the restaurant and in eating area, you're guaranteed to fail. People are not going to want to eat in a restaurant that you carry garbage through. I'm also concerned about how it's going to look in front of this restaurant, with the garbage cans there as well. And you said when you first started speaking, that you wanted to be a gateway, part of a gateway to the community. But as you spoke, it seemed that you really were not familiar with the community, and what this community actually wanted. As has already been stated, that most of the people in the community actually were not consulted about this restaurant. And I wonder, did you even do a market study, as to what type of food the people in, in this area would be interested in? From what you said, I, I kind of doubt it. I think I can just echo what other people have said with the garbage. Parking is horrendous. You have five churches around there, and businesses, plus the farmer's market and, and the, the Nature Center. And people just enjoying the park. There is not ample parking. No way is there ample parking there. There's, there's not ample parking now, without another facility being put there. This is not a good use for, for the neighborhood. I think that it, it will definitely not last. And like I said, once people find out you're carrying garbage through the, through the restaurant, people just will not go. People will not, will not get there. So anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'm just gonna sit real quiet and see if anybody else... Okay, I'm, then I will, Ms. Giles, you've spoken.
I just forgot to show the picture that I had of the restaurant, because I'm a square woman.
woman. Lady would be more interesting than you.
Then I will close the public record on this proceeding. Let me emphasize one thing that I, maybe I wasn't real clear about at the beginning. First, of course, we are acting separately. There will be an action by the Plan Commission, an action by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Both of those actions are recommendations to City Council, so that the council will have the final action on both the rezoning and the special use and major variants. I suppose it is conceivable that our actions would be inconsistent, and then the council would have to resolve that. All right, then, I will convene the meeting of the Plan Commission to consider the question of whether to grant the rezoning from residential to business. Comments from the Commission? Commissioner Bellisle.
Can we just, since we have to make our decision based on standards, if we could have the standards back on the screen, please?
Yes. Megan, run through the standards quickly, will you?
Okay, very quickly, there are four standards for a MAP amendment. The first being whether the proposed amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive general plan as adopted and amended from time to time by the City Council. Whether the proposed amendment is compatible with the overall character of existing development in the immediate vicinity of the subject property. Whether the proposed amendment will have an adverse effect on the value of adjacent properties, and the adequacy of public facilities and services.
Thank you. It's mostly wanted a reminder for all of us who have been hearing all sorts of stuff tonight.
Then are there comments with respect to any of those standards?
I have a comment. I have difficulty seeing how this project fits the second one here, especially after the rezoning that's relatively recent, where the split between the business that's to the east and R3 was put in there. And in general, creating, if we were to rezone this, we would create, like, break the continuity, So I have difficulty seeing how... If somebody can talk to me about it, I'm willing to listen. I don't see it personally.
I take your point, and I think that's... The property was changed from a business district to a residential district. But I would also point out that we've rezoned properties that had been rezoned around the same time, right? So, you know, that in and of itself isn't, I don't think it's dispositive. But, you know, the fact that it would break the continuity of residential in, on that block and then across the street, you know, personally, I'd say that that is a strike against the first standard.
Yeah, I suppose it depends in part on how you interpret immediate vicinity. It almost looks like spot zoning to me. Changing it from residential. I, like Commissioner Bellisle, think the second standard here is we may have an issue.
If we want to continue on the standards, if the Cook County housing was a private property, I'm pretty sure that private owner would be here and kicking and screaming because the smells, the grease, if we're grilling, frying, we're not sure, there's a lot of uncertainty. Big trees, I don't know, you can send some hot exhaust up there. I don't know which property these trees are. That specific one would probably suffer.
On property value, adjacent value. Yeah, I'm not sure how we interpret that standard, given that this is surrounded on both sides by public property, yes? Park on one side and Cook County on the other? Across the street, yeah, okay. Other comments, questions from the Planning Commission? Commissioner Lewis?
I have a question for staff. Excuse me, for staff. This property has an R3 zoning at the limited size of 4,300-ish square feet. Is there anything that can be developed there that fits, that, I mean, it doesn't meet the minimum lot size for a residence? Is there anything that can be done with this as it's currently zoned?
Yes. Because it is already an existing property, the lot size does not matter unless there's something like a zoning change or something like that. So as it currently is with a zoned R3, it could contain a single-family residence, and it would be considered legally non-conforming with respect to the lot size setbacks, that type of thing, other than it would need to have two parking spaces or a parking variance approved as well.
It's essentially the same size as a half lot. An R1 half lot, isn't it? 27 feet wide?
Essentially, yes.
Okay. We could build my house on it.
As it stands, the structure is unusable? Without any, like, any relief whatsoever?
As a single-family residence, yes. But as a non-residential use that is permitted in the R3 district, it would depend on the use and parking requirement.
I was going to say, I'm not as familiar as maybe I could be with the R3 uses, but are there any R3 uses that don't require any parking? I hate to put you on the spot, so if you're not sure, just say that, and we'll move on for a second.
Off the top of my head, I couldn't say for sure, but certain uses that are permitted or special uses in the R3 district that are non-residential would meet the parking requirement because the building is less than 2,000 square feet. But it is limited in the uses.
Understood. Thank you.
Commissioner Bellisle?
Let me go in a slightly different direction. There was an attempt, I think in 2008, to rezon this, and I heard from a member of the community, I'm sorry, I can't remember who it was, that one of my concerns was fumes and odors from a woodwork shop. Can you confirm that? And...
2000s.
I thought the packet said 8, but early 2000s. Are we working against a precedent as well here? That's one of the things that I would want to confirm.
I believe a woodworking shop was proposed that was not ever an approved use. I have heard as well that it did exist. Zoning was not aware of it.
There was a formal attempt to try to rezone it?
Yes.
Yes, that there was. That was denied.
Okay. On the basis of what do we know? We've heard in the community of fumes, I'm trying just to confirm that, and probably none of us were working here at that time, so...
Ultimately, it did not meet the standards.
Right. Anything else from the Plan Commission?
Is the fact that it's not served by an alley, and it's proposed to be moved to, or changing it to a business district, does that affect the standard of adequacy of public
How do you suspect it might?
Well, for almost, you know, for almost all properties, well, for a lot of properties in Evanston, most commercial properties, they're served by an alley, which is where the garbage will be picked up. So that's really what I'm getting at, that the garbage has to come out the front. But again, this is an old, Evanston's an old neighborhood, and so there are, you know, quirky properties that, you know, this property can never be served by an alley because there's just, there's no alley there. So, you know, in the hypothetical, anytime someone comes to us for this property, there's going to be that issue. But in this situation, we are talking about a restaurant which, in general, is going to create more garbage than a hair salon, or, you know, anything that's currently allowed under the R3 zoning. So I don't think that it would meet the fourth standard.
What is immediately to the east of the property line? Did I understand that that is a driveway that serves the public housing?
Yes, yes. Well, driveway is somewhat away, there is some grass.
Okay.
And then driveway. It's not parallel, but somewhat...
Here.
Driveway starts maybe seven feet away.
Now, this is a...
Between the building and...
And this is a...
There is a grass and some...
Okay, thank you. Now, this is a driveway that is owned by Cook County?
It's all part of the same parcel. It's just, you know...
Yeah, okay. So that in principle, I suppose, it would be possible to get an easement from...
Yes.
Okay, thank you. To get an easement from Cook County to use that property as an alley.
I've looked into this. I've looked into this situation, this Cook County, but since we didn't get very far, you know. And it's parking there, too. There is empty parking, and basically, we are not touching any of their trees, and parking is there, driveway is wide, parking is three cars over there. And there is way to rent something from them, but we didn't think we needed.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anything further from the Plan Commission? Somebody want to offer a motion?
I'm trying to formulate it right here. I guess the formulation would be the, I would move to, I'm trying to formulate, all right, so bring a staff's recommendation as is to the City Council. Help me reformulate it here.
So are you moving to approve the rezoning? Which is the staff's recommendation, I believe, is it not? Staff is recommending approval?
That's the motion I'm offering.
Okay, the motion is to approve the rezoning and recommend it to City Council. Is there a second? The motion dies for one of a second. Now, does somebody want to try another motion? Under our rules, if we fail to come to an agreement, the matter will go to council without recommendation.
My goal in offering the motion was to allow a vote on it and say yes or no to it. And I was trying to use a positive voice as a staff recommendation instead of trying to reformulate everything.
All right. The alternative would be a motion to deny.
Well, I will motion to, that our recommendation to City Council would have denied the rezoning.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Uh huh. All right, Bellisle and Dubin.
So voting yes to this means denying the rezoning.
Correct. All right. Ms. Jones, we'll do this on a roll call since it's going to council. A vote aye is a vote to deny the rezoning.
Commissioner Isaac?
Aye.
Commissioner Bellisle? Commissioner Lewis? Commissioner Dubin? And Chair Ford?
Aye. Five ayes, no nays. The petition is, the recommendation to City Council will be that the rezoning be denied. With that, I will recess the meeting of the Plan Commission while the Zoning Board does its consideration. At the end of their deliberations, we will adjourn the joint session, and then Plan Commission has a little business it needs to do. So, Chairman?
Okay, so before we start, I have a couple of questions for staff. The first is, given that they denied it, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter that their motion to deny passed because City Council can choose to override that, correct? So given that we're still moving forward, you still want a recommendation for or against from us on both the major variances and the special use? Correct. Okay. The second thing is that pesky thing I brought up about the roof height, which was not part of the application technically, which means it was not part of the notice. Staff is looking into this, so for the moment, continue on. But we will ultimately reach a decision in conjunction with law. Whether it has to be renoticed, and we have to do this all again. Correct. Awesome.
I have an additional question for staff. There was some, there was question or suggestions made by some sharing comments this evening that perhaps it wasn't noticed appropriately. Were all, I assume that all protocols were followed in terms of noticing it as legally required?
Correct.
Okay. So given that, let me hear your comments. Who's thinking what about what?
My feeling on this project is, you know, first, I would like to say that we've done a lot of, I've seen a lot of positive work along Simpson Street, and the study plans for the west side, including the 5th Ward, included reactivating Simpson Street as a commercial corridor. So theoretically, I would like to see more commercial development along Simpson. However, this project for Twigs Park, I believe, does not meet the standards of upholding excellence in the community, and particularly for a parkside establishment. The neighbors and the community that holds this park dearly has to have an outsized voice in the manner of, if there is to be a commercial use of this space, and I, for one, might like to see that one day, but I don't think that this is up to the standards of the community for sharing its prized park. There is not a well-designed plan for garbage removal. There is an inconsistent or unsure plan on how this restaurant would integrate with the park and with the neighbors. And I think, therefore, it is taking an undue risk, great peril to the park. And once it's there, again, we can't draw it back. So, given the nature of this particular design, I would recommend that we, recommend to City Council that we deny the special use.
I agree with Mary. I just think that this plan is not tight enough for this location. I feel like the... I feel like the neighbors have a lot of questions. I feel like the parkway is extra small. And I know that we will not be able to allow this business to use residential garbage cans. I know it's going to come down to dumpsters. I feel like there's too many unanswered questions that this business is not ready to move forward with this plan as suggested.
Well, I started off in reading the packet and going to see the property, feeling really good about what was a possible way of reactivating what, to me, looked like a vacant building. And, you know, you kind of framed it very well earlier, I thought, when you said that if done well, I thought this could be an opportunity to activate that end of Simpson Street and, and fill a vacant space in a way that could actually bring more vitality to the area. And in theory, I am not opposed with mixed uses along the corridor. That said, as I heard more about the proposal, I'm in agreement that there's a lot of unanswered questions, which were echoed in the comments that we heard this evening, that leave me uncomfortable with making a positive recommendation on this.
I would join. I say, like Lisa said, I would love to have something that revitalized this part, and I know this building very well. It is a very difficult lot. It's a very challenging property, and I would love to see something happening there. I am, I don't think that a good residence could be built on this lot. It will have a lot of problems too, including zoning. I think that there should be something of a special use over there, and I am not opposed to that. I still think that the restaurant proposal that we have here is, I would use the term not cooked enough, as a proposal. And once again, the idea of having something over there that will once again be a good thing both for the community and for the park, because this park is really precious over there. And probably all of you know, we worked with some of other people here on the revitalizing of Simpson Street, and many of the good buildings there are really nice, and they really brought a lot of new things to the community and made it a really, really nice street. And I would agree that this street needs a little bit different things on this end, on the west end. And close to the park, it's, on the other hand, it's a great location. It's a really challenging property, it's a great location. It needs something, but I would advise the property owner, think a little bit more about what exactly you want to do with this property, because this idea, exactly this idea, probably will, will not survive. So my advice is change what you're trying to do there, maybe in the, in a similar aspect, but think a little bit. There are plenty other things that you can do over there.
Okay. Being a resident of the 5th Ward, I also know the park very well. I believe that also as a, as an architect, that my specialty were restaurants. I would know a lot about questioning exactly what you're going to put there. With that said, you've also, and I will agree with Carol regarding this is a half-baked, pardon the pun, for this bakery that you want to put in there. You have not satisfied, at least in my opinion, what your final project is actually going to be. You've been waffling between I don't know, maybe, I will, kind of. That doesn't sit well with me. Also, it is a really good property actually for a restaurant, in my opinion, but you would have to integrate it with the park as part of the community, as part of the park, something that you can present to the community itself. And it basically have a cohesion between the community and this new development that you would want to integrate. As I see it right now, I don't think that has been planned, taken care of, presented to the community. And with that said, I don't agree with-
All right.
This project.
Thank you. So, so I'm going to be the anomaly. I think it's actually a really good idea. And I, I completely understand and appreciate where an applicant can seem like they're waffling on ideas and concepts when they're trying to be accommodating to wishes from the community and requests from city, from staff. We ran into this last week, just started our last meeting at the last fast type two restaurant, right, where it was certainly a more sophisticated plan, but there were still complaints from those particular neighbors about the same issues. And that particular owner had similar responses, which is, I'll do what's best for the community, I'll do what's best, I'll do what's required. I don't know specifically, but I'll try and figure it out. And I think in that instance, that owner, that was appreciated, and here it's not. And so I feel very strongly that his, his, I'm going to call it frankly what it is, lack of sophistication in presentation has hurt him drastically. And he would have been better served by having his architect present or a lawyer present. I think that that hurt you dramatically in this particular instance, because your application is not different from what we hear frequently. And, and we all would like to see economic development happen throughout the communities, because it does bring jobs and it brings vitality, and it brings people to the street, and it encourages redevelopment. So all of that is good. It's just, you know, so that's where I don't agree with the rest of my, of my board, that this is a bad idea. So what this is going to make for are some fun standards. Because as I go through every standard, unless somebody else wants to go through them, but I'm going to go through them with a, with a very particular point of view, and I'm going to need those of you who disagree with me to say very specifically why you disagree. All right? Fabulous. So with that, we will start with the standards for major variation. All right. There are seven standards, and number one is the request of variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use enjoyment or value, property values of adjoining properties. I don't think that this will have a substantial adverse impact because the particular property right now is underutilized. It's been vacant for many years and it is dilapidated. I think that a developed piece of property will actually bring higher property values to the neighborhood and will bring economic, additional economic development and other people to the neighborhood. So I do believe that that standard has been met.
I would respectfully disagree. I, while I would like to see this property activated, the use that is proposed, I think, will have an adverse effect on the neighborhood by exacerbating what is already a problem with rodents and other critter infiltration into the neighborhood, by adversely impacting parking, which I can attest is a problem in the neighborhood, by the requirement that garbage be put on the parkways, that we have, people have worked very hard to improve in the Dr. Hill community, that the, the lack of an easement for the removal of refuse has an obvious deleterious effect on the neighborhood, because once again, it brings garbage into the public way. So I, I believe that that standard has not been met.
Number two, oh, sorry, did you want to make, add more?
Yes, I want to add more to it because I also feel like that the adjoining property will be adversely affected by the use, by this use.
Anyone else? All right. Moving on. Number two, the request of variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance is, intends to be, to allow properties to be developed and to encourage commercial mixed with residential to, again, form vibrant communities. So I believe that that standard has been met.
Well, the, it, in fact, if it, the recommend, well, if we are to proceed with the assumption-
Let's, let's all remember, we're talking about the major variations. We're talking about the side yard setback. That's all we're talking about, right? These are standards for a major variation. This is not the special use. It's the side yard setback.
In that case, I don't, to me, that, that standard has been met.
Okay. Just want to be clear, these are, this is about the side yard setback. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. This is a narrow property without an alley. It will be difficult to develop in any situation, and it is unique in Evanston when you do not have access to an alley. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. In this case, the side yard setback for commercial next to a residential is a 10-foot side yard setback, which takes a 27-foot lot down to a 7-foot usable strip of land down the middle. If it's, it's 10 from both sides, right? No, 10 from one side, what's on the other? None. Okay. So it takes a lot down from 27 to 20 feet wide. And there is an existing building there. So I do believe it makes it particularly difficult to, to develop this property and to be able to get those, that addition to work properly with the layout of the kitchen inside. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number five, the purpose of this variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. Well, as a commercial operation, it is obviously their primary intent is to extract income from the property. However, I do believe that there is an, an, a desire from the applicant to have a public benefit, whether it's perceived or not, that of bringing a, a business to the community and to improve the storefront from what it is now to something that is better. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. This is obviously an older lot with old zoning, and there is an existing building on it. And so all of this has happened long before the owner took possession of the property. So I believe that that standard has been met.
I would disagree with that, because I believe that by proposing variants for commercial use-
Remember side yard only.
Okay, okay. So for the side yard-
Yeah.
-purchasing the property, knowing what the, what the restrictions were, this hardship is self-created.
Number seven, Miss, all right, did you want to add something?
I also agree that this hardship is self-created.
You got to give me a reason why.
I think that-
Please.
Okay. I also think, I think that the person having interest in this property, this proposal right here is, is not adequate for this property. That's why I think this hardship is self-created.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to let that go. Number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the zoning board of appeals. There has been discussion in the application that the applicant has worked with staff to try to minimize the amount of the side yard setback variation and to minimize the addition. And so I do believe that this is the minimum. There's, sorry, there's also been testimony about the size that would be necessary for the type of equipment that would go into that space. So I do believe that standard has been met. So with that, I just want to be clear about this, right, because we're making a recommendation. So, oh, doesn't matter. I was going to say conditions, but conditions will be on special use. So can I have a motion, and that motion should be in the affirmative, please? One of you has to do it. I can't do it. It's okay, you can vote nay to your own positive motion. It's okay.
I'm, I'm not quite sure how you would do a positive.
I move to approve, to recommend to city council that we approve a side yard setback of 4.6 feet, because we're talking about the variance only.
Okay. And then I can vote against that?
Absolutely, you can vote against it.
I move that we recommend approval to the city council for the major variance for a side yard setback. All-
I need a second? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All those opposed?
Naye.
With a, with a vote of five to one, your, that variance goes to city council with a recommendation for denial. All right. Now moving on to special uses. So we've got nine standards for special uses. And again, now we're talking just about the restaurant use. Okay. Number one, it is, one of the special uses specifically listed in the zoning ordinance, with the MAP amendment, it is one of the uses that is, that is specifically listed. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number two, it is in keeping with the purposes and policies of the adopted comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance as amended from time to time. The comprehensive plan is trying to enhance, encourage adaptive reuse of structures, and reusing this structure in this way for another use is a, is, is one of those goals. One of the other goals is to promote growth and redevelopment to strengthen the economic base. And the use, and, and having this special use in this location does indeed keep, in, keep in with the, the purposes of the comprehensive general plan. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number three, it will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types in the immediate neighborhood. I'm not aware of many other special uses that are in the immediate neighborhood. I don't believe that there are other type two restaurants in the immediate vicinity. So I don't think that the addition of this special use in this location will cause a negative cumulative effect of special uses in this location. So I believe that standard has been met.
I think that the cumulative effect of this special use will have a negative impact on the neighborhood for the reasons mentioned beforehand, which is an undue accumulation of refuse, the attraction of rodents, the parking overload in the-
Can I interrupt? Because what we're talking about is a cumulative effect of special uses, not a cumulative effect of situations that might occur because of the special use.
Well, then I will say the cumulative effect of special uses, because other special uses in this immediate neighborhood include a lot of parking variances that have been granted. There are other type two restaurants in the neighborhood. And the cumulative effect of this, in this neighborhood will have an adverse effect on the neighborhood because of, again, the refuse, the rodents, the parking. So I don't think that standard has been met.
Number four, it does not interfere with or diminish the value of the property in the neighborhood. I do think that with some attention to detail, that can be certainly worked out with staff. I do believe that there is the ability to manage some of the potential problems with a, with a type two restaurant. And so I do believe that when the, when the overall effect of the property is taken, there will be an increase in value to the- be an increase in value to the property in the neighborhood because of the redevelopment and the dollars spent on that, and the economic development resulting from that. So I do believe that that standard has been met.
I do not believe that this standard has been met, because although there will be an increase in economic development, I believe that there are a lot of problems with this proposal that will cause, that will diminish the value of property in the neighborhood.
Number five, "It can be adequately served by public facilities and services." This is certainly not the first property that we've considered that does not have alley access, and so a situation where garbage is brought to the front is, in my opinion, is not not. So it is adequately being served by public facilities and services. I think that there are solutions out there, and there are conditions that can be placed to make that a reasonable solution, make a reasonable solution for the community and for the applicant. So I believe that that standard has been met.
I don't believe that standard has been met, because the need to, it's not just that it's not served by an alley, but that there is no viable easement by which a restaurant owner can move garbage from the restaurant to the street. And once again, the parkways on the street, while in many areas of Evanston must be used for residential garbage and recycling collection, restaurants typically do not move their garbage to the front of the buildings. And in the absence of an easement, there is no feasible way to get the garbage there. So just the natural infrastructure of this particular lot does not provide the necessary services for this business.
Number six, "It does not cause undue traffic congestion." Given the testimony from the applicant, it seems like this will be a very small restaurant with not a lot of, with not a tremendous amount of traffic, and so I do believe that there will not be undue traffic congestion in the neighborhood. So I think that that standard has been met.
I think that that standard has not been met, because currently, there is a lot of traffic congestion in this neighborhood without this restaurant. The addition of a business to this community will cause a lot of traffic congestion, so I believe that standard has not been met.
I would want to qualify that. I also don't believe that standard has been met. I do think that a business can do well at that location, but I believe that it would be a business that would naturally bring its clients and the community to its doors by walking or by bicycle. And I think that this is more of a destination use for this particular restaurant, and so people will more than likely have to drive to pick these foods up, and there is congestion and a lack of parking there.
Number seven, "It preserves significant historical and architectural resources." I don't think that that standard applies in this case. Number eight, "It preserves significant natural and environmental features." I don't believe that that standard applies in this case. And number nine, "It complies with all other applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and other applicable ordinances." And it certainly will, so I believe that that standard has been met. Now, I know where this is going, but we're giving a recommendation, and this is our opportunity to put constraints on things and make recommendations to City Council on what constraints should be contemplated, should they choose to ignore our recommendation, which has happened in the past. We all know that. So, there's a couple of things, right? There's hours of operation. I think that there is potentially commenting about noise on the patio and that there not be speakers. I think that we need to, the gated trash enclosure, which was recommended in DAPR, that that gets codified, and that the fence, and that there be no gate to the park from the west side of the fence. I also think commercial garbage pickup, yeah, do you just want the piece of paper? Commercial garbage pickup at least two times a week, where they roll the garbage out from inside, so that it's not sitting on the sidewalk. And I think pest control is a key component here as well. Additionally, we want to talk about employee parking, and that employee parking should theoretically, the employee parking should be at the nature center, right?
So the nature center parking lot is a public, it's a city, it's a public...
So we're not going to say that. We're just going to say it's city lot.
Yeah.
Right? So they're just not on the street. Okay. What else? What else?
I also want to go back to the garbage pickup. I want to talk about, they're rolling their garbage out to Simpson Street. I want to give an amount of time that that garbage can sit on Simpson's.
No, 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 no. What we're suggesting is that when Groot comes to pick, this is the recommendation I propose we make, is when Groot comes to pick up the garbage, Groot pulls up his truck, he walks in, walks through, goes back and gets those garbage cans, walks back through, walks out and dumps it, so that those are not sitting on the parkway.
At all.
At all, ever.
Any length of time?
Any length of time, ever, whatever. Never. Because I think that's a key component here. So again, these may or may not matter in the end. It's our ability to shape the discussion at City Council. That's the reason I want to mention these.
I think that's the correct thing to do.
So is there anything else that we think is important here to shape City Council's view?
Yes.
Bring it on. As a condition.
Well, one of the conditions that I would say, I mean, I think that light pollution is as important as noise pollution into the park.
So not dissimilar from the last one, you weren't here for it, were you? I can't remember. Where we ask that the building be dimmed after hours, except, and that light levels be limited to safe, light levels necessary for safety concerns, something like that. Anything else?
The hours of operation, are we comfortable with the hours of operation as...
That was recommended by staff. Those hours, the 10:30 to 8:30, was recommended and by staff in the DAPR meeting.
What about litter collection?
Oh, and all the stuff we normally say, right? It has to be in substantial compliance, they have to comply with the litter collection plan, you know, all that good stuff. It's going to be a hellacious, hellacious motion.
Because there were so many items still to be...
Worked out.
Determined.
Yeah.
That will all, assuming this goes forward through City Council, then that will all be determined through staff review, so, you know, building materials and, you know, all the various pieces that, you know, are still to be worked out would be determined through staff review, and so is there anything that, from that, that would need to be qualified in this?
No.
I don't, I don't think so.
Roof raise.
Well, staff has to deal with the whole re-noticing of the roof. That's their problem, that's their problem to solve. So the motion goes something like this. I move that we approve the special use.
I move that we approve the special use for a restaurant at 1821 Simpson? 1829 Simpson Street, that we recommend approval to the City Council with the following...
Conditions.
Conditions. First, that the garbage be picked up at least twice a week, and that the receptacles not be left on the parkway, but that the pickup be simultaneous with the moving of the trash cans to the garbage truck. That there be employees park only in designated city parking lots. That there be no speakers on the patio that would create a noise pollution in the park. That the lighting in the restaurant be muted in the evening so as to not impact the park, except insofar as is necessary for safety of patrons coming and going. That the restaurant have an aggressive schedule of rodent control as part of its regular monthly operations. That the restaurant be constructed in substantial compliance with the items that were presented to DAPR. And that the fencing be installed according to the plans...
The plan shows a gate.
The plans...
The plan shows a gate, so we don't want the fencing comply...
Or that the fencing be installed as approved by DAPR and City Council going forward.
Hours of operation?
And that hours of operation be as stated in the applicant's testimony, 10:30 to 8:30, 10:30 a.m. to 8:30 p.m.
Is that everything?
That's everything.
Excellent. Substantial compliance, litter control. You got those?
Yes.
Sorry. All right. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
With a vote of five to one, you go to City Council with a recommendation for denial of your special use. And with that, our zoning board meeting is concluded. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, zoning board.
If you give us a minute, we'll get out of your way.
If there is no further business to come before this joint session, we are adjourned.